We can get just. Thank you. Thank you. Me calling on this screen right now to give everybody to this. Love shining gun. Be doing some good things.
Yeah.
Hello.
Hi.
Hey, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, good.
Hi, guys.
Hey, Teresa. Mike's on.
Hello.
That Josh, Mike?
It's Josh.
Hello, folks.
Elizabeth is here. Who we missing? We're just missing Tom. He's on, I think. I'm trying my phone tonight as I think so. If that works better.
Definitely sounds better.
Yeah, there you go.
Hi, Jeff, I'm here.
Hey, Tom, what's going on?
Work.
You gotta be tired.
Never stops.
Playing in the snow all day, right?
Well, and other things.
Yeah, there you go. Okay. And you got five minutes, so we'll just hold out here for a few. Is it there? And what's, uh, what's the name of, what's the name of the building inspector guy? What's his name Dale? Write down Dale. Just put Dale.
Come here.
Yeah.
Want me to get you your food so closed down or not? Yeah.
Okay, it's seven o'clock and I think we're ready to proceed. Hopefully everybody's wired in here, we can go. Good evening, my name's Jeff Schmidt, I'm the chairperson of the town of Duensburg Planning Board. And I, we're gonna open up the February 18th meeting. Melissa Depper has done a great job getting all the information out on the website, the agenda's been published. Hopefully everyone has a copy of the agenda, it's always available on the town's website. So the first part of our, our structured meeting is the open forum. Kind of the guidelines for that are, anyone can speak to the board about a topic not on the agenda. The ground rules, one presentation per person, limit your statement to four minutes and state your name and address for the record. Okay, with that being said, I'm gonna make a motion to open the open forum for the February 18th Town of Duensburg Planning Board meeting.
I'll, I'll second that for you, Jeff.
Thanks, Tom.
Hi, Lynn. Hold on a second, Lynn.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Liz?
Yeah, it looks like, I don't see Liz anymore.
Yes. Thank you.
There she is.
Elizabeth is back.
Tom?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
And can that, that also serve as our roll call for attendance? Does that work too?
That would suit me, Mike, that's a great idea.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Lynn.
Hi, Lynn Bruning, it's Duensburg Road. I'd like to thank the board for posting the draft January meeting minutes within two weeks of the meeting. It allows everybody to know what's going on and it is very helpful, so thank you. On February 5th, I submitted a letter to Supervisor Tidball and Chairman Schmidt concerning the Oak Hill Emergency Access Road. I have not received a reply and I'll attach the letter to the statement and submit it all to Melissa. Tonight's agenda doesn't contain a review of the solar law, when will that be reviewed next? And because it's not on the agenda, I'm gonna mention this. Today Governor Cuomo made an announcement for community solar and storage programs for local governments. As you review the Duensburg Solar Law, would you please keep in mind that community solar is a feel-good marketing term? The electricity generated can be sold anywhere, even out of state. For example, the two projects by Hecti and Kosaki will be selling the, a percentage of their generated electricity to Eversource in Connecticut. And I'll include the power purchase agreement for your reference. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. Is there anyone else that would like to bring up a topic for discussion? Okay, hearing nothing today, to that end, I make motion to close the open forum for the tonight's meeting.
A second.
Who seconded? Does anybody know?
Who did the second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. I couldn't hear. Jeff?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes. Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh.
Michael?
Yes. We're getting better, not all the kinks are out, we're getting better.
Nothing, nothing bad was some harmonizing.
That's right.
Need voice recognition software. Okay, we're all set on that? Okay, the first major agenda item is the public hearings. Tonight we have Richard Hickok back for his public hearing. Richard, are you there somewhere?
Uh, yes, I am.
I gave you some to-dos and hopefully everything's kind of straightened away with your proposal, if you made any revisions, let us know and this is your time to present.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, 'cause I can't see nobody for some reason, but that's okay. I talked to Dominic DiCarlo at Schenectady Health Department, which in turn, I guess Dale talked to him also. And Dominic said, um, we, I could have the electric toilet, which we talked about earlier. But then he also said, if I can tap into my home's existing septic system, he said, I'm, I, I'm more than welcome to do that if I can do it, which I can do it.
Oh, good, good.
Yeah, you know, I mean, you, you know, that's, that's the way he left it there. So that's, that's all I got to add to, you know, to the situation that, you know, I can do it that way and he's more than welcome to let me do that.
Okay, yeah, that might be the best option, I'll give you more flexibility in the long run.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, I never even thought of that, be honest with you, I, you know.
Can you bring up the map maybe, Melissa, that this survey can see where, how that, how far away the existing septic is and maybe that'll help with the discussion? And Mr. Hickok, does that include a, just a gravity connection or is it gonna have to be a pump to, to reach the existing septic?
Uh, it's probably, I, I may. We didn't shoot no grades, but I might be where the existing cabin was gonna be to begin with, maybe too low. I can move the cabin over to the other side, I got 35 acres there. I can move it over to the right side of the house. You know, back in the woods there, which it would be gravity fed, I'd be able to get my quarter, my quarter inch per foot.
Okay, can you see this?
He said either way, he said either way, or I could use a pump if I had, you know, if I wanted to use a pump.
Okay, can you, can you see the, the map that Melissa has on the screen for the plan?
Yeah, I sort of see it on the corner, Shelley, could you get me a map?
Well, I guess.
My wife's gonna get a copy of it in front of me.
There's a, I, I, it's hard for me to read, but I think it says existing, is it existing barn right there, is that a barn or is that word? Or is that existing home, I just can't, it's too small for me to read it.
I got the driveway.
It's, I think it says barn. It says barn, okay, so where, where is the existing, where is the existing septic?
Existing house and an existing barn, where, where it says, if, if we don't use the pump, where, where we show the proposal site, we will go to the left where it says existing house. We will go to the left and put it in, in that section of woods over to the left of the house instead of the right.
Okay.
Like the, the note right below the existing house is septic area. Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and that's not too far, really, is it?
No, no, I, I asked him what my limitations were on footage. He goes, I don't care, you go 100 yards, 200 yards, as long as you have the pitch.
Right. Okay, that's your best bet.
Oh, I think so too, sure, sure I do.
Dale, any concerns from your end on that?
No, none whatsoever. I had talked to Dominic and that was, my thought was to, the way it looked, that it would be pretty close to the septic system, so why not connect to that? Then he doesn't have to worry about gray water or anything.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea, Dale, gives you lots of flexibility.
Sure.
Run some potable water up there, then your gray water is all taken care of and your wash water or anything.
Right.
Absolutely, yep.
Wash dishes, but, yeah. Good idea, okay.
Dale, is the septic system relatively recent and in good shape or?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Dale, go ahead.
Yeah, that, that house is probably 10 years old or could be a little older, but the new septic systems are made with a 50% expansion if he ever needs to expand it. And it's based on a number of bedrooms.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. It seems fine. Anybody else have any comments or observations on this or?
So Jeff, just, this, we had a, an open public hearing and we, we, I guess we kind of put that on hold until this week. So do we, is this our public hearing or is this the board's chance to talk and we need to open, reopen the public hearing?
You, Mike, you continued the public hearing.
Okay, right.
So it's, it's technically open right now, but
Okay, good, okay.
You should open it, you should let the public know their comments are welcome.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's on the agenda as a public hearing, so I think the public has been notified that it's, you know, it's on the agenda for this.
Did you want to invite comment, Jeff, from the public?
Yeah, anybody in the audience has any comments, we'd love to hear them, you know, I mean, this is why we're here and this is why we do this. If anybody has questions, support, proposal, any, any thing you have on this project, now is the opportunity to comment.
Sounds like not much.
Right.
So I'll make a motion to close the, the Richard Hickok public hearing?
I'll second that.
Did we ever open it, just out of curiosity, 'cause I don't have a roll call for that.
Last month.
Oh, so, okay, so that just
It's just being continued.
Continued, okay. Thank God you guys are here.
We could have reopened it, but it's, it's, I think we're okay.
You're fine.
So is that Jeff and Mike?
It was Mike and Tom, I think, right?
Yes, right.
So Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Liz?
Yeah.
Josh?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes. That's a yes.
Okay, the next step on, on this, the public hearing is now closed. We have no concerns under secret on this, right, Elizabeth?
Correct, this was a secret type two, so know that further action is required.
Okay. Okay. Based on that, I think we, I think we're, the board is likely in a position to make a recommendation to, to approve the special use permit. Hearing nothing for the contrary.
I make a motion to accept a special use permit for Richard Hickok.
I'll second that.
Tom?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Okay, great, Richard, now, it's, it's inherent on you to work with Dale on the septic approval and then you should be good to go for the, the purposes of the, the planning board.
Oh, excellent, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Continue to work with Dale, he'll be good in the right direction, so.
Okay, sounds good, I'll, I'll get in contact with him when, I guess you could say when the weather breaks, you know.
About June at this rate, you know, but
By the looks of things, sure.
Yeah, yeah, and, and thanks for dealing with the board, you've been good to deal with and, you know, this is the way we like to do business, so.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate, I appreciate your time.
Good, good.
Okay.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right, good. All right, well, moving on to old business, we've got a couple items under the old business. One is Spiro Cagas and the other is Cassell Group. I guess so. We'll hear from Spiro, I guess we, we need to make a motion to open a, open business to for Spiro Cagas, okay, so a motion to open up the discussions on that project.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Hello?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, just give Melissa one minute here.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
I think she disappeared, yeah.
Melissa, try again, I don't think you heard you, I heard you.
Okay, yeah, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. Mike?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Liz?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, Spiro, you can tell us where you are on your, on your, we gave you some to do's last time and.
Correct.
Has changed in some degree, but maybe you can, we do have your your sketch that you sent in.
Yep, I have the sketch and and I did, yep, and you got also the blown up, uh, map there.
Okay, okay, so Spiro, now is, what I understand is now this, your your application has has changed a bit. From the food truck now to simply a storage of vehicles there? Is that what we're?
It's not storage, it's just, it's just, it's overflow parking.
Okay, okay, and what what is actually, you know, how do you, how do you, in your mind, do you define overflow parking? Is it long term, very temporal in nature, two, three hours over?
Yeah, it would be, it's a short term parking, basically for everyone to wait their turn to get into the car wash over there. Is, as you can see, I was, like I said before, it's, it gets pretty congested real quickly over there. With the RVs and the some semi trucks. So basically, like I said, I'm setting up the overflow parking there so they can go in and park. And also, uh, try to deter people from turning around and going back out the entrance road too, which is been a problem. Uh, as of the last few years.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I looked at some of the estimates, I mean, is there any other future plans for it in your mind or is this the limits of it?
Uh, that's probably gonna be pretty much the limits of it for right now. I really don't see too much going further with that. That's really the main news that I really want to have over there.
Okay, and is there gonna be any kind of utility work over there, any lighting, any? Just, or is it just you're gonna bring in, you know, a foot of crusher run on a piece of fabric?
Yeah, that's it, just crusher on a fabric, uh, just trying to keep the expenses a little low on that right now.
That was quite a lot of money just for that from the estimate I saw, yeah, so. All right, uh, the board members have any, any questions or comments for Spiro?
What was the total square footage of the the lot? Um, I believe. Or what was your dimensions? I think the total square footage is right around forty-two thousand. Yeah, if it's, if it's gotta be under an acre, you start getting into a different criteria. No, it's, yeah, it's definitely under an acre. I don't want to get involved in any kind of danger, anything like that. I was already added by Cobblestone Stone about that. And you have fifteen foot setbacks, which Dale, I'm assuming that, that, you know, is adequate for the zoning? Uh, is there gonna be any fencing or anything like that? No, I'm just going to leave the natural wooded area that's there right now. One side over there is the abandoned road there, I believe the town owns, uh, which that's, you know, I got fifteen feet from that. Which that's another, I think, another twenty-five feet or twenty feet of road. Well, it doesn't look like a road, but it's all grown in. And I got fifteen foot from the setback from the neighbors there. And and of course, the other side over there is is my property. I still left myself about ten feet from the setback over there, too.
Are you gonna leave any kind of, I know that's kind of scrub brush up in there, is there, you gonna leave any kind of, you know, buffer for your neighbors there? You don't really have for it.
Well, I I'm going to, um, I'm gonna leave the trees that are existing there and the scrub brush.
Okay.
Just to give it some greenery.
Yeah, 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 I know you're. And is there, is there actually enough room for, how how would these trucks kind of navigate through this area? Doesn't seem like eighty feet's enough to turn a tractor trailer around.
Um, well, twenty-five foot would be the entrance and, uh, and the eighty feet, basically, they would be backing in.
They back, they back in off the main way, okay.
Yep. Which that's, that is more than enough space to to maneuver and do that.
Okay.
And that's, that would be the best way for them to to pull out too. So I'm gonna, you know, due to not having enough funds for a blacktop in that area. Uh, what I'll end up doing is I'll have cones set up where they can back in and then they can pull out.
And, okay, so on this sketch that we would be viewing, is this the, these are the number, if we had to set a limit as to. You know, be specific in the permit that this is designated for.
Yep.
Six, six trucks and I mean, how many spaces you got for cars there?
Yeah, I think it's like about fifteen spaces I got for cars.
Okay.
And the trucks are, it's not gonna be just trucks, as you all know, I do a lot of, you know, RVs inside there too. So it'll be a mix, RVs and trucks.
So do you anticipate any like overnight or weekend parking there or is it just, I mean, short term?
No, no, this is, this is all short term. Soon as, soon as, soon as they're called upon to get into the wash bay.
Okay.
Then they'll be out of there.
Are you?
Any board members?
Are you still proposing the food trucks, Spiro, or?
I I do plan on going for the food truck once when it's purchased. And like I said before in the last meeting, whatever I do with the food concession trailer, um, it will be legal through the health department. And it'll have the correct permits. And that's something, you know, I I may place just in the in the parking lot over there for a few hours at times or move it someplace else. It's, it's just gonna be out and about and on the road.
So just to be clear, this special use permit, though, will only pertain to the overflow parking, is that correct?
Correct, yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Spiro, if if you intend to bring that food truck in, is it your, your intention to modify the special use permit? To to address that?
No.
Because I have to ask Teresa then, is that an allowed use under the, without a special use permit? Teresa still there?
I apologize, I'm sorry. There's a little bit of DIY going on at my house tonight. Um, I, I do believe that's a question for Dale. In this, on this.
Special use to the principal use, so they would have to apply for a special use permit if they choose to do that.
Okay, so the answer is Spiro, you would just have to come back for the food food truck, okay?
Yes, until I get possession of the exact food truck, that's when I wanna do, proceed in doing that.
That's, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, that's good that we clarified that, Spiro, because I don't, you know, I just want to make sure that you're aware of that. And the board concurs and, you know, council concurs that you have to come back if you want to bring that food truck up in there, so.
Yes.
Not a big deal, but.
Yeah, I just want to take a step at a time here.
Okay, okay.
My overflow is is more important to me right now.
Okay, okay. Elizabeth, are there any secret concerns for this?
No, this also would be a seeker type two, so no further review or action is required.
Okay. Okay, all right, I guess the next consideration would be a motion to set up a public hearing. And.
Yes, that'd be March eighteenth.
Yep, so I'll make a motion to set up a public hearing for the Spiro Cagas application for a special use permit. On our next meeting and what does it say? It was March?
March eighteen.
March eighteenth, okay, day after St. Patty's Day, so March eighteenth.
And I'll second that for you, Jeff.
Thanks, Mike.
Jeff?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, so Spiro, we'll see you on March eighteenth. I, I. Guess that's when we'll see you next and we'll do our, our due diligence to get this published for public comment and stuff. And we'll see you then.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all righty. All right, the next project is the Cassell Group upon Mariville Scotch Church. Road, speak, seeking a special use permit, we discussed this project at our last meeting. And this is a continuation of our discussions. We had some questions as to, believe, ownership and things like that. And arrange us with the the former owner. So maybe you can give us a rundown on this, where we are now.
Right, hi guys. All right, so it looks like I had to get the application for the planning board, town of Duanesburg. Signed by New York State ARC, A R C. So you guys should have a copy of that signed copy, which gives us the the okay to apply for the special use permit.
Okay.
So I believe that was one of the things on my agenda that I had to accomplish and Melissa should have that in the office.
Yep. Here's some place. Okay, so is, how are you making out with this? Can you, maybe just go through and update us on any progress you've made? You got the signed copy of that. Anything else you'd like to add?
The only other thing that I, I was responsible for to keep this thing rolling was to get this application out to the Department of Health.
Okay.
Which during the course of this month, we got all the papers in, it was, it was pretty lengthy. To get all the corporation paperwork done, assumed name paperwork. Um, go through budgets, three months projections, twelve month projections, just everything. So all that paperwork is done and submitted to the Department of Health.
Okay.
The news is it was just submitted today. So that's where we're at. And it looks like after they process everything and look over everything, they're gonna assign a project manager. And then I'm gonna go through the steps of making sure that they have everything they need.
Okay, okay. All right, so you got, you got, you got kind of a, several months probably to get through that process, you believe, or?
I'm hoping to have an answer by next month. I'd like to, although I don't know what their schedule is these days.
Yeah, I don't think it's really an unknown with this COVID stuff.
I'd like to see if we can get, we have two parts of of the approval process here, Department of Health is one. And then you guys is another. And I believe last month, we kind of talked about who would be the lead agency. You know, who would kind of take the lead in this, because one is probably gonna, you know, refer to the other. So I don't know how you guys want to go about that.
Teresa, do you have any recommendations on it?
I'm trying to remember how we classified the action. Liz, do you recall?
Yes, I think we determined it was going to be a seeker type two, because essentially it's a similar use. And they're just making modifications to the interior. I think we did have some questions just about the septic system and the age of it.
Yes.
But otherwise, yeah, from seeker, it was, we determined it was a type two.
I I spoke with the county health department and they're gonna require that he have a P. Evaluate the system and make sure that it's going to be adequate.
Okay, okay, that's good, Dale.
Thank you.
And Mr. Cassell, have you done anything in that regard? Or are you still just, you know, gonna get through the health department first and then try to get to the next step?
While the health department is taking its its time to kind of look this over. I don't mind doing, keeping busy with something else. If I have to keep busy with some kind of approval for the septic system. I could, I could always talk to Dale and maybe he can kind of, you know, steer me in that direction, let me know what I need.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we think we, the, I think the board would like to have all those ducks lined up before we issue the the special use permit. We don't like to issue with a lot of contingencies on it, if you had those approvals in hand. And that would be good for us, you know, you could have more finality in the permit, so.
Okay, that sounds good. So anything regarding the permit process or the the septic, I could start working on? That'll give me something. I need something now.
Yeah, I think getting that permit from the health department is gonna be your toughest tour. But the septic may be pretty straightforward, they'll probably, you know, like Dale said, they'll ask you to get an engineer just to assess it. And give you a letter saying, yeah, it's just adequate for the number of bedrooms, bathrooms. You know, I don't think that's a big deal unless the system is is in, you know, dilapidated shape, then hopefully that's not. But.
Okay.
Just, just a quick question, Jeff, sorry. Daryl, could you give us a copy of what you submitted to the Department of Health with just the personal stuff redacted? You know, is that something that you can do? And then the board can take a look at that and think about setting the public hearing?
That's, I don't mind doing that. It's full of personal numbers and figures. So I don't know how, I don't know how you're gonna block that out. I could leave that up to you. Some of that, I don't know if I really want on the street, you know, it has some personal stuff in there. Um, but I don't, I don't mind sharing it with the planning board, if that's what it takes.
Yeah, don't, don't give it to us. If it has that kind of personal information, let's not do that. Is there, is there any narrative or anything that you could share with us that sort of explains what you're applying for and all that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure. There's some general information, they kind of want a breakdown of what we want to do. So I could probably go through some of that stuff if you, if you want and send it, send it off to you guys. I don't mind doing that.
I think that would be helpful, then then the board will understand the process, but definitely don't send us any personal information.
Yeah, that's, that's a good suggestion. I like that, you know, give us something to, you know. As long as the board is, is, you know, knowledgeable about the project and, you know, and you just gotta get the details of the financing and all that stuff. We don't really care about that, but, you know, it's the, kind of the conceptual, you know, information that the board values. And.
Okay.
We can go from there. That'll make the process. Once you get that, then we can set the public hearing up and and then, you know. Hopefully, you know, since it was used for that before, it seems like, you know, it's hard to anticipate what the public hearing will bring out. But, you know, as long as you have your, your, uh, due diligence done and give us everything we need. I, you know, I don't anticipate problems, but it's all speculative.
So is the Department of Health, so that's kind of speculative, speculative too, how that's gonna go.
Yeah, 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 that's, that's, I think you gotta worry about them more than us.
Yeah.
But that could get a, become a very complicated process, I believe. So at this point, I guess what we could do is, I guess we can make a motion to continue discussions of this under the, under old business. Uh, for our next meeting at March eighteenth, assuming you could get us some more information. If for some means, you get all this information tomorrow, all approved, you know, let us know. And I don't think we'll be in time to schedule the public hearing. But I can, I can see maybe, maybe April, if you got it to us in March, in April, we could maybe skip, perhaps schedule a public meeting, a public hearing.
All right, so what we're looking at is we're looking at the information, the non-personal information. From the Department of Health application. And then, and then also something, maybe I'll talk to Dale tomorrow or something about that, of something with the septic, some kind of written.
Yeah.
Right, those two things basically is what we're looking at and.
I think, I think the only other thing that you'll have to show since you're gonna be operating it as a, as a healthcare facility is just that your water is adequate as well. So Dale, I don't know if you have that information that you can give to Daryl.
Yes, I can provide that information to him.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Is, is the capacity gonna, like, that was a home that was used in the past and, and how many more, say, patients or residents will be there compared to the, its former capacity?
I was under the understanding that it was meant for a ten resident, it was a ten resident house with the bedrooms and the bathrooms. So we're, we're just duplicating it. We're not adding bathrooms or anything.
Okay, okay, yeah, so that's I guess that, that would be a good thing as far as, you know, looking at approvals, you know. Okay, so we'll put you, how about this, we'll, we'll put you on the agenda for next month under old business and you can bring us an update. And maybe things will, will go the right way for you and we can set up a public hearing at our next meeting, so March eighteenth.
That sounds great.
That work for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that closes out our agenda for old business.
Do you wanna, Jeff, did you want to make a motion to table it till next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. Yeah, we should make a motion to table the Cassell Group review to our next meeting on March eighteenth for continuation.
Oh, second?
Yes.
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 Josh.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Okay, under new business is our next topic. And then we got a sketch, sketch plan review. First item is Paul Jometi. Seventeen fifty-six Mulroney School Road. So Paul, are you on here?
Mark Blackstone is on, I'm a surveyor.
Okay, all right, Mark. We talked about this at our last meeting, I believe, didn't we?
What happened is this has gone through several different revisions or, and we've arrived at the three lots that are here now that are a little different than what we had previously been contemplated.
Okay.
We're retaining the middle lot for the existing residence, septic and shed and creating a lot to the left of it to create a building lot there and the remaining, just under eighty acres to the right of it is the third lot to create a future single-family residential lot for that property. So it's really one existing situation with two new proposed lots.
Okay. On, on lot one is, is another strange configuration, but is there, there's quite a lot of grade to that. Isn't it on a side hill? Is there enough room to for us to put a septic up in there? You gotta shoehorn it in there or you gotta?
Yeah, the there is some slope there, so it would, it flattens out a little bit better as it gets closer to the road. It wouldn't surprise me at all for it to make sense to put the septic system in the front yard and have the house set back a little bit to to deal with the slope.
Okay.
So I submitted it just for the initial review so that we could finally begin the process and, and maybe move forward quick with, with it. Now that we're all on the same page, so I, I just figured it would be easier to start anew.
Yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, any, any comments? Dale, do you have any comments on, on the kind of layout of it?
I do. Lot one.
Yeah.
It gets narrower in the back.
Yeah.
At the building where you build, it has to be two hundred foot wide. So at some point back there, it's, you're gonna have to show a line or something that they can't build beyond that certain point.
Okay. Without, since. Sure, so you need a, well, you need a, a box that shows a minimum width of two hundred and, and how that impacts the, the more restrictive building envelope as it would relate to the width.
Right.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, and at the same time, you might want to show it like a proposed septic and well locations on that, you know, so that we have kind of.
So we have a lot. I'll add, I'll add contours and proposed house and septic as the submittal for the formal application. So for next month's meeting, we'll, we'll have a more elaborate layout, but I just figured this new configuration needed to get us all on the same page and we can move forward with it.
Okay.
Couple of questions.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Jeff. I'll, I'll go after you.
Oh, I was just interested, is, I'm, I know there's some curves and dips in that road, so again, on that smaller lot is, is there, there's no blind areas for driveway, you know?
I can provide a site distance situation for that.
Okay.
Yeah, there is, there is some grade change on, on the road, so I'll, I'll add that information on the plan so it's clear to the, perhaps we'll, as we submit a formal application, it may very well be a issue that the county engineer's office would need to take a quick look at with regard to driveway cut permit and make sure that it's sufficient site distances to satisfy their concerns.
Okay, because, yeah, unfortunately, Miss Mulroney School Road, although a rural road, people go very fast on that road. So it's kind of a concern, so.
Yes, so people travel very fast on most roads in Duanesburg.
Yeah, yeah. Not me. Okay, so those, those are kind of our our comments on the sketch plan. I think that lot one really does need some, some attention.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions there. Is the, is the S, is that a shed on lot two?
Yes.
And, and Dale, do sheds have to comply with setback requirements?
They do if they're over a hundred and forty-four square feet.
And this, this looks, just from, from my scaling of this, it looks like it is, right?
Correct. That's why I built the, the property liner around it to be able to comply with the side yards setback and rear yard setback because it's a substantial size shed.
Yeah, and where I was going with that is if they didn't have to comply, maybe taking those setbacks and moving, moving lot two, kind of sliding it to the right, but if, if it has to comply, then that idea is, is no good, so I can stop talking.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're aware that the strange configuration of the rear of, of the lot one restricts use for any structures. Had conversations with Mr. Jometi relative to potentially providing a deed restriction or, or to preclude building behind the existing residential lot so that it doesn't create a visual issue as it would relate to enjoyment of the existing residential space.
One more question for clarification, a little rectangle across the road, the one oh four by one oh seven, well, depending what size, does that stay with lot two?
Yes, that was, if you look at the right-hand side, the lands of Romanski, Romanski and Jometi swapped the same square footage. Romanski got a little bit of a width along his property, added to his property in exchange for this little rectangle. The rectangle is to provide Jometi with the assurance that by owning it, no one would build directly across the street from him and ruin his view. Because of course, the, well, the most valuable part of this land is the spectacular view.
Yeah. Okay.
Is this all pretty much open right now or does it have?
It's a, it's a hayfield.
Okay, I wasn't sure if, because there's a pond over there. I wasn't sure where that, that's downhill from this or?
There's a pond on Romanski's property, I believe. Romanski Junior.
Okay, so as long as there's no drainages that would then cut in further into lot one's buildable space or anything like that?
Right, I understand. No, no, there, there are no restrictive. And I propose obviously to put this at a scale that would be more easily depict the building area for lot one and, and be a a bigger version, so it's clear to see the areas that are available for construction and septic and whatnot for any potential development of lot one.
Sure, sure.
Do you know anything about the soils up there? Are they, are they drainable or is it all clay up there?
It had, has a, a little decent gravelly mix with it, but you know, it is, it's typical Duanesburg soil. It's not, I don't, I don't believe there was a, you know, an elaborate alternative septic when Jometi built, but that was, you know, thirty years ago or, or more.
Yeah.
So, but I, I would fully expect it be necessary to have an alternative system for both of the new lots, because as time marches on, our regulatory hurdles and hoops are more numerous than they used to be.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, as long as there's rooms worth, it's gonna be kind of, it's like, it'll be a little crunch time when you actually start fitting it all in there with the setbacks.
All right, why don't you put it in the, if you put it in the front, we have not much issue, I don't believe, but it's, it's hard to, hard to see on a hundred scale, so we'll make it bigger and, and show a proposed septic area to clearly depict the potential areas are sufficient to, to accommodate it.
Okay.
Mark?
Yes.
One thing you may want to look at is there's some historical lots over there, so you may have to do a long E A F. I, I'm not sure on that lot, but I know there's quite a few historical lots over there. So you may want to check that out, too.
Okay, I can provide separation distances relative to, well, we have, the octagon house isn't very close, but I'll look downhill. I think is a significant distance to any old farmhouses.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to make clear that.
Yeah, I, I have a long form filled out. I'll submit with the formal application to be submitted for next month's meeting.
Okay. All right, anybody else on the board have any comments? Mike, you got anything else? Tom?
Thanks, Jeff.
I just had one quick question and Mark, you, you know the drill here, but I'm sure that the existing septic and well for lot number two fit within the footprint that you've set for the building envelope, since they're not on the plot plan. I just wanted to make sure.
I'll show the septic. The well is yeah, I'll show both. I'm not sure if the well's on there. I may have inadvertently forgot to put it on. It's back near the shed, but yeah, I'll show the existing septic area. And they're all fit quite easily in lot two.
Okay, thank you. And then to Dale's point, yeah, I think this, this might be a type one, so thank you Dale for raising that.
All righty.
Okay. Next steps. Teresa, what's your, the recommendations for the next steps on this? We'll get a revised sketch. Should we just wait for that to make our next move?
Well, I don't think the board needs to do anything else. Next, he'll come in with the subdivision application and we'll go from there, so.
Okay. Okay.
I think Mark's done this before, haven't you, Mark?
I've been, been through the hoops a few times myself.
All right, well, we're gonna drive through the hoop again. All right. So you'll set everything up for a subdivision application, you'll look into the seeker implications, and at our next meeting, we'll put you on the agenda for old business and if you got all your ducks in a row, then you can get the process in high gear.
Great, I will get that paperwork in more than ten days ahead of time so that we meet all deadlines.
Okay, okay, so.
Because the next meeting would be on March, March the eighteenth.
Eighteenth, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Wonderful. We'll see you in a month.
Do we put a motion on to put this guy on the agenda or should, should we discontinue?
We're good. You've completed the sketch plan process, so there's nothing that you need to do.
Okay, okay. So we'll see you next month with your suitcase of documents for us and then we can get you in, in gear, okay?
Wonderful, thank you.
All right. Great, have a great evening. You too. The next sketch plan would be Scott and Donnie Gray, two thirty Overlook Heights. So who's representing? Are they?
Hi, hi, I'm Scott. For some reason I can't, all right, guys, I've been trying to turn my video on. It keeps telling me I can't, so not sure why about that. I'm Scott Gray. I live at two thirty Overlook Heights. I have a three parcel lots on Overlook Heights Road. They're broken into three different parcels. I'm currently living at one of them and the other two are vacant land. With here, Bob Farnham, who is in the process of trying to take on a piece of property that you see in pink that is against his. That was originally from a very messy subdivision from eons ago that I'm trying to clean up and in the process get some property to Bob that he needs. So this is, this is our second time here. Freddie Metzger set up the drawing for us that you see on the screen. And we're hoping that we can keep moving forward.
Okay, so you're simply gonna change the lot line so that area in shaded in pink is gonna be conveyed to Farnham? Is that the concept?
That's correct, yes. The Farnham owns the property to the left, the large parcel you see on the left.
Yes.
That was basically tied to his, that pink area was tied to his. That was a landlocked parcel that was created, God, I want to say twenty-five years ago by the person that lives next door to me that since moved and there's a new family there now. And when they did it, they kind of cut that lot up into three lots. There was one, one deed and three separate lots. That was really a mess, so we're just trying to clean the mess up and make it so that Bob could use that piece of property and I can do what I want with the lots I have.
Wasn't there something to do with the lots closer to Route twenty-two or is that?
It's all, it's basically, there's two lots involved. The lot on Route twenty that it looks like a pie shape and then it's separated by the Niagara Mohawk or National Grid power lines. The two parallel lines you see running almost vertically and then a lot that's behind my house, which is where he's got the squiggly lines. That is the lot that I'm kind of just redefining. It, it was the way it was originally set up, it was a mess, so we're just trying to clean up the lot lines is all we're trying. That is the lot that I'm kind of just redefining it. It was, the way it was originally set up, it was a mess, so we're just trying to clean up the lot lines is all we're trying to do. There's no, there's really no difference in the amount of property I'm gonna own, other than the three, three-point whatever acres that's gonna end up getting transferred to Bob.
Okay, so, so the, are we doing a property line adjustment around the pink? I think I understand that one.
Correct.
Are there property line adjustments we're doing up on the, on either side of the power lines?
Correct, so it's kind of hard to see in this picture. I almost, I wish I could kind of draw on this screen, but if you look at the lot that's up in the upper right-hand corner, see where the V is coming off in the upper right-hand corner?
Melissa, can you kind of put your mouse over that to make sure we're talking the same thing?
Yeah, see the V that he drew with the leaders in the top right-hand corner?
Keep going, yeah, right there, that one.
Okay, now go up, right there. Okay, that lot was originally tied, or is, right now is tied to the lot that's to the left of the power line and tied to the lot that's in pink. How that was ever developed, I could not tell you, but that's how I bought it. That's what they did. I don't know how they got away with it, but that's what they did. So those three lots, which are physically separated from each other, are all on the same deed. The lot that's just below that V-shaped leader is part of the lot that's to the left of the power line, so that's another lot. So what I'm trying to do is group the two lots that are on Route 20 together, keep them as one lot, and then group the lot that's to the right of my property, my house, and behind my house on the second lot, and then give the pink area to Bob. That's what I'm trying to do.
Just, I understand it, and Tom's the only one that's old enough to have done this before, so we can blame him.
I don't know how the heck they ever got allowed to do that. I can't even get, without asking Bob for permission, I can't get to that lot. Bob's got more access to it than I do.
So do you, are any of these drawings surveyor drawings?
This is from Freddie Metzger.
I don't see an LS on it anywhere. What, what am I missing?
We have a smaller copy that Fred sent me, Teresa, because I couldn't send that to you. So your big map is at the town.
We provided 10 copies of the big map.
Yeah.
Teresa, I, I have a copy of my binder, so.
You do, okay.
It's got a stamp on it.
It does, okay.
This is our, this is our second time here. Freddie's already spoke for us the last time during the summer, and we are just getting around to getting, because of COVID and everything, we're just getting around to getting this on paper.
And it is, it is signed and sealed.
Great, great. Well, it was, you'll appreciate it's such a mess of a history here that you really want a surveyor in this, in this situation to tell you what's what, because it makes absolutely no sense.
Yeah. It, I don't know how, Freddie went to the county and he's like, I don't know how they were allowed to do that. Apparently didn't go through the town, so.
Dale, does the, that new wedge lot, the one that's closest to 20, does that meet the minimum width? It looks like it's maybe 30 feet, or maybe I'm misreading it long. It would have been what was lot 6B.
We did talk with Dale, and Dale said that that constitutes as a corner lot, and that the road could come out parallel to the power line onto Overlook Heights as opposed to 20. The front would be actually on Overlook Heights, not on Route 20. So we were able to get it because of that. You don't, we have to go the 40 foot on 20 and a 40 foot on the power line and the 80 foot on Overlook Heights.
Okay.
And Dale agreed with us that that would be the best, that would be the best place for a car to go in and out anyway. You would, you wouldn't want to have a car come out on 20. You'd be better off coming out on Overlook. There's more than enough room there from the intersection.
Yeah, and the overall lot would end up, what, like four something acres?
4.7 inches.
I just wasn't sure on the setbacks.
Yeah, yeah, the setbacks actually worked in my favor because I can come to Overlook, and it's considered a corner lot.
Guys, I'm in it. Well, this is, you can, you can feel free to disregard this, but I'm gonna recommend that you have a public hearing on this one, because this is so very terribly weird. Rather than, you know, do it in, in an alternate format, especially since we have so many lot lines changing, I just think it would be prudent to, to get it out there.
Can I, can I ask what the steps would be for that? Like, what kind of timeline are we talking?
Well, what, what you would do is you would just follow the procedure for a regular subdivision, which is you, you've submitted your plat, you'd submit your subdivision application, and then we'd have the public hearing and then make a decision on it.
I was, I was led under the impression that this was just a lot line adjustment. I didn't, you know, Freddie's pretty, pretty adamant about it's just lot line, just cleaning up a mess that was made. I mean, the lots aren't really changing the perimeter. The lots are gonna remain the same. It's just removing basically those two lines between the lots on the right and eliminating the line between mine and Farnham's on the left. So it's not really, I don't see it personally as a, as a new subdivision. It's a lot line adjustment. And that's what I was told when we were here in the, in the summer. Bob, can you correct me on that? You were here for that meeting.
I don't recall any substantial determinations at the last meeting. I only know that uh, this is fully surveyed. I've got a survey on the 50 acres. You've got a survey on all of this. The surveys are all been filed. And, and as far as I can tell, we're creating legal lots, so there's really no major impact or change, and we're not proposing any development, so it's not really a subdivision. We're not creating a lot.
And the lot that's on, the two lots are already building lots, so it's not like we're asking, I'm not asking for anything other than cleaning it up, really. They're already approved building lots.
Right, so you're gonna take what are essentially currently, well, no, it isn't a separate lot, so.
It's two building lots that I'm asking for two building lots, really. And then just cleaning up the crappy lines that they originally drew.
Right.
I'm still gonna get, it's not, there's no third building lot. The piece that's in pink is gonna get attached to Bob.
The original subdivision created a landlocked parcel that's shown in pink.
That really is illegal, if you ask me. I don't know how he was able to do it, but they did it.
Dale, do we have any of the backup docu-d documentation on this subdivision, or is it really, is it, how old is it?
1990 router. It's quoted on the lower left-hand corner of the subdivision, or the survey map submitted.
We purchased the property in 90, 98, and it was like that in 98. And honestly, I didn't even want to buy it when I bought it, but I, it was one of those things I didn't want my, I didn't want somebody building behind me or to my right, so I bought the whole thing. I just bought it knowing that it was a mess when I bought it.
So Dale, do we, do we know what, how this happened?
I have no idea how it happened. It was before me.
It was before you.
Yeah, it was well before Dale, that's for sure. I think I had, you was my building inspector. You weren't my building inspector, if I remember right, were you? When I built my house?
Yes.
Yeah, you were, okay.
But there's also a lot across from the subdivision on the corner of Knight Road and 20 that was part of this.
At, yep, at one point, there was a lot, if, right where that triangle is, I apparently owned that at some point too, but that got somehow absorbed. I don't know how that happened years ago. So yeah, I, I mean, I would just appreciate if we can kind of, I don't know, I don't see it as a, I don't see it as a subdivision. It's a lot line adjustment in my eyes.
Up to the board. You have the discretion one way or the other, guys. And we're certainly not creating a new lot here.
Oh, there's no new lot. I'm not gonna end up with, Bob's gonna end up with three point something acres extra, and I'm three point something acres less. That's all it amounts to. And we're happy neighbors. You're making two happy neighbors right now. That's one thing I could say.
This appears to be a lot line adjustment. Why aren't we looking at it as a lot line adjustment?
That's what I thought you were. That's the way it listed.
Um, it's entirely up to you guys. If, if you're satisfied with the level of information that you have here, then you can certainly treat it as a lot line adjustment and refer it to Dale. We've certainly done that before.
Teresa, that's where I'm leading as well. I guess I'm, I'm just asking, is there, what do we risk by doing that? What, what could come up in a public hearing that might change that approach? Is there anything you're concerned about?
Um, I guess the, the, the only thing is just the weirdness of how it all occurred. And my experience has been when, you know, when there's an old subdivision, you know, that that people have different views about what happened, why, and when.
Well, I could tell you, if it helps, all the neighbors that are around me right now are all new to the development, so it's not like, and in fact, the neighbor, the neighbor that's on the corner to the right of the pink, I actually offered him that lot first before Bob even called me, and he didn't even want it. He's like, what do I want to do with it? I don't want to pay taxes on it. And then out of the blue, Bob called me, and I'm like, sure, I'll do that, you know, so it's like, you're, you're really gonna make townspeople happy, because I can't get to it anyway. So if, you know, I, I really don't see any neighbors having an issue with it, the neighbor that.
We're actually removing your headache.
Yes, we're removing a headache. You're right.
Yeah, no, I think, I think the, having the pink, pink piece end up with Tom, or excuse me, with Mr. Farnham is certainly a good thing. Especially since we can't explain why it even exists to begin with. And then the other two changes, you know, moving it on different sides of the power line right away, it's, it's still two lots. I, I, as long as the lots meet the requirement, you know.
Freddie conferred that with Dale. Dale, is that correct? I believe Freddie talked to you about it, right?
Yeah, I'll have to look at it, but I do, I did talk to him a little bit about it.
And if, if this was as simple, ignore the stuff around the power lines. If, if we were just moving the pink lot over, and that was the only thing we were doing, would we solicit input from the neighbor to the right?
I could call him right now and get him on the Zoom if you want.
I guess. It's part of the normal process, Teresa, because this is a landlocked piece that the neighbor to the right kind of thinks nothing's gonna happen to, and then it gets sold to somebody that does have road access, Mr. Farnham, would we have concerns that the neighbors to the right would voice a concern? Does he have any, does he have any option to make a move there?
I can, I can have him on the Zoom session in 10, 10 seconds if you want me to.
Yeah, I don't.
Totally fine with it. He's my best friend.
In?
What's that, Dale?
Isn't that a ravine?
Between the two, yeah, he can't get to it either.
Completely unbuildable.
Unbuildable.
Okay.
Yeah, we use for it.
Okay, I will withdraw my recommendation.
I think we, I'm good. So do we want a motion to defer or refer to Dale?
Yeah, use, use the language from the
Who's got the card?
I got, I got the card.
Mike, you got it. I, I, I think, uh, I'm not persuaded that on the subdivision route, I think the lot line is, is fair game on this, this thing. It looks like you've done your homework and hopefully your, your depiction of your neighbor's feelings towards this is, is accurate.
Not at all. Not a problem there. Like I said, I wouldn't be afraid to call him right now.
Yeah.
In fact, he was just texting me about five minutes ago, wants to know what I'm doing, so.
Yeah, yeah.
He's fully aware of it. I gave him first dibs on it. He didn't want it, so.
Okay, okay. All right, anybody from the board have any apprehensions on this? I, I, I think I'm gonna, my, I would be inclined to go forward with a lot line adjustment.
I agree.
I agree.
Sounds good.
Agree.
Have you changed your mind, Tom?
No, I think lot line adjustments is where to go.
Okay, all right, all right.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. What's our next step then? What do we do now?
All right, let, let me take care of an official proceeding, and then I think that we, we can head, refer it over to Dale. Uh, so the planning board determines that the proposed lot line adjustment neither creates nor increases any significant planning issues with respect to the existing or potential future use of any involved parcels. No additional lots will be created as a result of the lot line adjustment. The planning board declares the proposed action to be further exempt from any further subdivision review pursuant to this article, and refers to the application of the code enforcement officer to complete administration of the same. So I make that motion.
I'll second.
Yes.
Liz.
Yes.
Jess.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
So now, now you get to work with Dale.
Okay.
Okay, we're with Dale on this, and again, thanks for doing the homework on the, the mapping.
You're welcome.
Good job on that.
I'm a CAD, I'm a CAD teacher, so I, that's what I teach in school, so that's why I got to join you guys.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that's helpful, because I think the last time we had, you know, a sketch that was even more confusing and but, yeah, this is good. You did your work and paid off for you.
All right, thank you so much, guys. I appreciate it.
Okay. That's another job for Dale.
We'll keep you busy, Dale.
Very soon.
Guys, on, on one old business matter, I just wanted to make sure that the planning board is okay referring the comp plan with the comments to the town board. If somebody could make a motion to do that, that'll kind of close out your involvement with the comp plan.
Okay.
Has everybody seen the comments? Melissa sent them to everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And actually, Teresa, I'm glad you raised that. So in terms of the seeker process, I have in my notes that at some point we're required to make a recommendation, and I just wanted to be clear, would this fulfill the entire requirement, or do we still have any requirement as for seeker?
No, you do not. The town board is the lead agency, so they'll take care of seeker. And Dale's completed a part one EAF, part two, and a proposed part three for the town board's review. So we've got it, Dale's got it covered.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Dale.
Okay, so Elizabeth, can you frame a motion for this for us, or?
I can. I would make, I'd be, I'd be happy to. I will make a motion that the town of Dwayne'sburg Planning Board uh, recommends submitting the comments we've received on the comprehensive plan to the town board for consideration.
Okay, I can second that motion.
And Elizabeth, could you just add to it that you recommend that they move forward with the update?
And we also recommend that they move forward with an update to the comprehensive plan. Thank you. I'll make that motion.
Okay, all right, I'll second that motion.
Liz.
Yes.
Jess.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
And Mike.
Yes.
Thank you so much, guys.
Yeah, thank you, Teresa. You put a lot of time in on that comp plan, so that was very good.
I was, it was a baby.
Agreed, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, to all the, who, who, you know, put the time in on that, so yeah. Kind of glad Phil did that for us. Okay, the next would be the minutes approval from the January 21st meeting. Anybody have any comments on those, or additions, deletions? Typos? Shouldn't be any, because Melissa did it some. Okay, hearing nothing, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 21st, 2021 Planning Board meeting.
I'll second that.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Liz.
Liz.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay.
Jeff, that was an efficient one.
Yeah, I can't believe it, you know? Try to get fired the next time. Next meeting is March eighteenth, the day after St. Patty's Day, so I'll, uh, I'll be a year older by then, which is not a good.
Happy birthday.
But, uh, okay, I guess we can, uh, make a motion to adjourn the meeting, and, uh, we'll see you on the eighteenth, and, uh, stay safe and get your shots if you can. It's almost impossible to get a shot in the state, so we'll all be on a waiting list for our COVID shots, I think.
Utica, Utica, Jeff.
Utica, yeah, my friend went to.
Plattsburg, I mean, it's beautiful this time of year.
We're Potsdam.
Yeah, Potsdam, too.
It's almost insane that they don't have them in this area. I, I, hard to believe, but.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Michael.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
Liz.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Approved, all right.
Okay, great, and again, thanks, Melissa, for doing a good job setting this up and getting the minutes all typed up good. You carry the brunt of the work for us. We just show up one hour every month, so. Appreciate it. Okay, good night.
Good night.
All right, thanks. Have a good one, everyone.
Take care of all.
All right, bye.